Everyone of you, welcome to the City of Daly City Virtual Spatial Planning Commission of November seventeen twenty twenty. The current virtual planning commission meeting format has been undertaken by the City of Daly City is in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. A planning commission thanks the public for its participation in the virtual meeting format. It is our intention that the commission receive any and all comments that you may wish to make for the land use proposal being considered tonight. If you would like to comment, please do so as soon as possible on the open go website. You are not allowed into and finding division stuff will read the comments you have submitted after each item. Also after each item, there will be a pause for five minutes to ensure that the commission has ample time to receive any comments communicated to the open go website. Thank you, and let's the flag, Gary?
Yes.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic One Nation Under God Indivisible with Liberty and Justice for All.
Thank you very much, Gary.
You're very welcome.
Roll call.
Sorry. Crump?
Here.
Pacheco?
Here.
Satori?
Preston.
Villanueva?
Here.
Ronyo?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And now we go out to the problem minutes of September one twenty. Any motion?
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved a second that we approve them minutes of the previous meeting. Okay, everybody say aye.
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 Good. Now, tonight, we have actually three very important subject matters pertaining to the growth and development of the city. Item one will be about general plan amendment GPA thus eleven thus nineteen thus zero one or three three one on change. ZZ thus eleven thus nineteen fourteen three three two and design review DR thus eleven nineteen thus one four three three three. Regarding Jefferson Elementary School District proposes to construct fifty-six apartments within two six-two and three-story building surrounding central courtyard and associated shortlist parking faculty and staff on approximately two point four acre site located at the eastern portion of the MP Brown Elementary School campus located at three oh five Eastmore Avenue. A community center and various outdoor amenities would be in the courtyard area. The parking lot would be located outside the perimeter of the buildings. The total proposed gross floor area for the site is fifty-one thousand seven hundred fifteen square feet with a maximum building height of thirty-six thus seven. The proposal will amend the general fund designation to residential medium density or RM MD and the zoning of the site to RT multiple family residential busy pursuant to the requirements, the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, an initial study and mitigated negate negate negative declaration have been prepared for this project. And this will be now presented by Carmelisa Morales, the Asian Planner Planning Commission. Go ahead there, you are recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Satori. So I please confirm that you can see my presentation?
Yes.
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 Evening, everyone. So as Commissioner Satori has stated, I will be presenting on this general plan amendment zone change and design review for three oh five Eastmore Avenue, which is on a faculty and staff housing project for Jefferson Elementary School District. The presentation will be a summary of the staff report. So this shows the site location. It is directly adjacent to the MP Brown Elementary School just to just east of it. It's within the same campus. It's bounded by Pier Street, Eastmore Avenue, and then some commercial residential uses on the east. Some background information. As I'm sure many of you know, the Bay Area is facing a housing crisis and due to the critical shortage of affordable rental housing, it's been become increasingly difficult to attract and retain high quality teachers and staff. In twenty eighteen JE SD proposed a measure U which author which the voters authorized some funding that in some part will be allocated to construct affordable rental housing to attract and retain teachers and staff members. And this project does seek to alleviate the housing issue by offering rental housing for JE SD faculty, staff, and their families. This shows an aerial view of the a closer view of what the project site looks like. So you can see it's an open athletic field. And here are some site photos from Eastmore Avenue and some photos from Pier Street. As you can see, there's a slight, there's a huge topographical change. So it's on a higher elevation on the Pier Street side versus the Eastmore Avenue side. But there it is surrounded by by existing tree cover. So this project consists of fifty-six apartments within six-two and three-story buildings. There it is surrounding a central courtyard. There will be a community building and outdoor amenities, including a play structure, a community garden. The maximum height is thirty-seven thirty-six feet and seven inches. There is plenty of open space, including open lawn areas. Some restored hillside habitat as well as some habitat corridors between the buildings. And there is a loop road that provides ninety-seven parking spaces that would wrap around the buildings. And the next few flights will go over the project plans that were submitted. So this is the site plan. You can see blue road surrounding the buildings and the main entry point is at the bottom left corner. And that is from Eastmore Avenue. Here's a landscape landscape plan. You can better see the the proposed courtyard and then the the green spaces that are also proposed. Here is the ground floor plan. The second floor plan. And the third floor plan. And as you'll see, the northern buildings are the ones that are third story, three stories. And the next series of slides will go over each of the buildings elevation. So as mentioned before, there are six residential buildings and then one community building. So this is the first building. And this is the second building. This is the third story building or the three-story building. This is also another three-story building. This is a second story or two-story building, building four. This is building five, another second, a two-story building. Building six, the last two-story building. And building seven, which is the community, community center, which is a one-story. The next few flight slides, there are some renderings provided by the applicant. As you can see here, I believe we're facing north northeast. You can see the various roof heights as well as an existing soot canopy on the left and then the courtyard and community building inside the courtyard. And then the existing tree cover that surrounds the buildings. Here is a profile view. This is the front of the community center. The believe the tot lot is right where the the gated area is on the left. And then the residential buildings surround the community center. Here is a detailed view of one of the buildings. It's sort of like a picket fence designed for some of the balconies. It's it can be found in various buildings throughout the site. So just to go over access and parking, there was no issue with parking with this project. It complies with the proposed with the required parking spaces, which is ninety-seven. And it's all provided as surface, surface parking. As mentioned before, the main vehicular access is at the south please southwest corner off of Eastmore Avenue. And there are also entry and exit gates which allows for secured access. The loop road does feature a two-way driveway up until the northeast corner and then it transitions transitions into a one-way driveway. And there are several pedestrian walkways, which is shown in the next slide. So you'll see it at the left side and the bottom left and then the right side. This just allows this facilitates pedestrian access to the school and also to the main road on Eastmore Avenue. So this project is requiring a general plan amendment and a zoning amendment. The proposed density is twenty-three dwelling units. Currently, the general plan amendment or the general plan designation is public facilities. And because it's changing into a residential use, we have to change the land use designation to residential median density to to allow for the proposed development. As for the proposed rezoning, it is within the Sullivan corridor. And it will stay within the Sullivan corridor. We're just changing the the zoning from school to residential high density. And the remainder of the property will still remain existing public school use. So those designations will not change. As for the design review portion of this project, as you can see from the elevations and renderings, it's sort of a modern architectural design with some shed roofs, some overhangs, a mix of colors and siding, which adds architectural interest. I didn't mention the wood picket design. There is say improvements and thoughtful landscaping landscaping throughout. The view of the residential buildings are obscured because of the tree cover that's existing on the property as well as the sloping topography. And the proposed height and the use are generally compatible with the uses surrounding the project site, which is residential and commercial, all two or three stories high. The applicant was required to submit an affordable housing plan that was approved by the city. They are required to provide ten percent of all rental units be affordable to low-income households and priced at seventy percent of the AMI for San Mateo County. JE SD is proposing six affordable units. However, JE SD is also targeting the remainder of the units to be priced at twenty-eight percent below market rate, although not required, that is their their goal. This project, due to its location within Airport Influence Area B in the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for San Francisco International Airport, it was required to go before the Airport Land Use Committee and CCG board in October fifteenth it did. And I was determined that it was consistent with the ALU CP policies. As for the environmental assessment, this project did go through an initial study, which was prepared by our environmental consultant. And it was determined that a mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate level of environmental review. It was finalized last Friday and the public review period will end on December second or December third. The initial study and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program are all included as attachments in the staff report. So there, there's a lot of text here, but the engineering and the applicant did go through a few of the their conditions of approval and made some slight changes. So it just affects some of the language and the requirements. I mean, as you can see in the the strike through text and then the bold text, that's what's been deleted and what's been added. That's for condition of approval forty-three, fifty-one, sixty, sixty-five, and sixty-six. If you have any specific questions about that, I'm happy to answer them. As for the findings, this is a general summary. The full list of findings are available in the staff report.
Are you through now? Are you through?
Yeah, this concludes my presentation. So this is the recommendations to the planning commission, which would be forwarded to the city council. And that is to adopt the findings, adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and then approve the general plan amendment zone change and design review subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. That does conclude conclude my presentation. JE SD would like to make a brief presentation subsequent to mine. So I'll just flip over to their their slide so they can get started.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morales.
You're welcome.
We are going to open this for public hearing. So are there data, are there any letters or comments that is pertaining to this project?
Yes, we do have some comments.
Would you like to to read the comments? Or are there to speak?
Okay, so you want me to read the comments before we?
Yes, quickly, yeah, because we 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 are here in virtual, so we don't see them, so.
Okay. All right, hold on, let me get to open.
Or if the commissioners wants to speak for this project, or again, so you can always just butt in, make your point, okay? Any comment from the commissioners?
Not right now.
Please make sure Satori, would you like the JE SD to make their presentation now or after public comment?
Okay, if you want, we can do that, we can do that.
Okay.
They can make a presentation, okay? You can do that, okay? Are they ready?
Yes, Bernie, are you ready?
Okay, go ahead.
It looks like you might be on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Morales, for your introduction. So my name is Bernard Vidalis. I'm the superintendent of the Jefferson Elementary School District, different from the Jefferson Union High School District. And I want to think
Okay.
I want to thank the members of the City of Daly City Planning Commission and the Daly City staff for this opportunity to present to you tonight and introduce you a very exciting project that we've been working on for the last three years. Can you advance a slide, please? Thank you. So the Jefferson Elementary School District with the support of the Daly City today has an opportunity to build a fifty-six unit faculty and staff workforce housing for employees of the Jefferson Elementary School District. This would be the first project of its kind in San Mateo County and perhaps the Bay Area or California for a kindergarten through eighth grade school district. You've recently approved the Jefferson Union High School District, which is for a high school district, but this would be for our kindergarten through eighth grade school district. It would be the second project for a public school district in San Mateo County and would bookend the Jefferson Union High School District's project very nicely, which is located at the other end of St. Francis Boulevard. Both projects, as you know and have heard, they're integral supporting our goal to attract and retain highly qualified staff to serve the students in Daly City amid the high cost of living in the area. We anticipate approximately fifty-six to seventy employees in these units that are arranged in six buildings that surround the central courtyard, equipped with a community room and a hotspot play area. As the development is right next to a school site, families with older children can use the school playground when not in use by the school and students. May you advance a slide, please? This project has many tangible and intangible intangible benefits in addition to those already mentioned. Principally, this project provides a respite for staff from housing instability stress caused by sudden rent increases or surprise eviction notices enabled by the high demand for rental housing in this area. The additional units of rental housing that's provided by this project, when added to those of the Jefferson Union High School District, have the potential to relieve some of the strain on rental housing in the area so that more residents in Daly City can also benefit from relief of some of the practices enabled by the high demand and low supply of units on the market. The units, as expressed earlier, are aimed to be priced approximately thirty percent below market rate, maybe more, enabling more staff to live closer to their work sites. The project also meets the Daly City affordable housing requirement for more than the required units. The project has the potential to incorporate our staff more integrally into the fabric of Daly City, Daly City economically, socially, as well as strengthening strengthening a middle class that is all but disappearing in too many Bay Area neighborhoods. You advance a slide, please? So this project incorporates many environmentally friendly features as well. It will be equipped with solar panels, generating clean energy for use on the property. This is in addition to the electricity generated by solar panels for use on the school site. We will utilize a modular construction plan, which will define all of the residential buildings.
You're on there for a while.
Yeah, this will reduce our building waste, environmental building noise, and maximize other efficiencies. The parking lot will be equipped with electrical vehicle charging stations, making it possible for residents to consider a cleaner, greener choice in vehicle with the convenience of charging at home, an option not regularly offered to renters. The project is, as you know, centrally located and walking distance from the Colma Bart Station, enabling trips to San Francisco and the peninsula destinations without use of a car. The project will also be equipped with equipped with several bike lockers so that residents who wish can bike to work for recreation or for other activities, making full use of the proposed and planned bike thoroughfare that will be winding through the neighborhood. Advance a slide, please. So we at the Jefferson Elementary School District, on behalf of our board of trustees and our staff, are very excited to offer this opportunity to partner with the City of Daly City to not only make history by approving a first of its kind project for a kindergarten through eighth grade school district, but also continuing to invest in our community students and families and also in our broader community. We are hopeful that this project, three years in the making and the planning, has the components to help our school district contribute to the fabric of this community by explicitly embedding more of our employees in the community that we serve. Thank you for your time and attention to this. I'm available for questions, as are some staff, as well as architects and project managers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vidalis.
Thank you.
Well, will you find the explanation of the project? Are there any question from the my fellow commissioners?
No. No.
No.
No.
No.
Okay. Are you willing to be asked questions, Mr. Vidalis?
Of course, if I can't answer.
Just like ask some few question because
Of course.
This place I know about, I think twelve years ago, there was an erosion of soil. It went down to the first strip and to others around there. Are you aware of that?
Um, we did have, I believe, some soil from the side. And that has been addressed now by further reinforcements. Mr. Heath, who is also here with us, can tell you some of the latest improvements we've made for that. We did conduct a full soil investigations and analysis to make sure that it can support the structure of this of this type. And we did get a positive outcome through that analysis.
Okay, and how many trees do you think will be a cut off in that area in case this go through? How many trees do you think?
Mr. Heath, if you're on the call, can you answer that? I know we did have an arborist go by and analyze our trees.
Because I know there are several trees in in that area. So I'm just addressing this, just to clarify, amplify things so everybody will learn. Because a lot of people are watching now.
Right. There, there are several trees and you know, many of those are from the types of trees that are currently at the end of their lifespan and we've had to remove many of them. But we had an arborist do an analysis. So, Mr. Heath, if you wouldn't mind answering, that'd be great.
Yes, so on the actual print of the of the project itself, there will be no trees identified as having to be removed. The district will continue to maintain those trees and as necessary for the artist's report. The only area that is actually not on the footprint of the site is the walkway to the southeast corner. And currently, there are no trees in that in that footprint of that walkway.
Thank you very much. Any more question to my fellow commissioners? Otherwise, we're going and any question from the panel? If not, we are going to close the public hearing. So any motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved.
We do have, no, we do have comments.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
I would recommend that we open the public hearing, Chair.
We already opened the public hearing here.
Then we should read the comments into the record, thank you.
Please, please.
Sorry.
We will do that, that's why.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Just listen carefully before, because sometimes we compromise our meeting, okay?
Okay, so we have three comments and I will read through them. The first comment is from Mabel Manio, Vice President of Jefferson Elementary. Mabel, sorry. The comment says, good evening, commissioners. I'd like to comment to show support for this project. Housing is a basic need and is important to help our community attract and retain high-quality teachers and staff. This is our chance to be at the forefront of the solution to this problem. I hope you see the surmountable benefits to this plan. Thank you for your time. The the next comment is from Clayton Koo. And he writes, good evening, planning commissioners and City of Daly City staff. My name is Clayton Koo and I am a school board member for the Jefferson Elementary School District. The Jefferson Elementary School District Workforce Housing Project located at three oh five Eastmore Avenue is an important district initiative that will help us recruit and retain high-quality teachers and staff to ensure that all of our K through eight students can thrive. This project will address some of the high cost of living locally for our hard-working staff with the construction of fifty-six apartment units for our district teachers, staff, and their families. Residents of this project will be able to enjoy open space, a community center, and be within minutes of all our school sites. I ask that the planning commission tonight adopt the city staff findings, recommend that the city council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting program and approve the general plan amendment as presented. Thank you, and I appreciate your consideration of this project. And then our final comment is from Sean Black. And he writes, I read, I read through all of the documentation as best I could. And I must say that I'm pretty excited about what I see. I do have a couple of questions, though. First, I didn't see any mention of solar being added to the buildings. Has this been considered at all? I will admit that I'm a huge proponent of solar on all new construction and any re-roofing and would like to see this taken into account. Second, given that land on the peninsula is at a premium and that the city has a golden opportunity here of taller structures been considered. Instead of three-story buildings, why not make better use of the space and build higher four or five stories? Third, the reason for the proposal is that teachers and staff employed by the district have trouble finding affordable housing. Does this mean that the units available would be provided for them alone or that they will be prioritized for residency? And that concludes the comments on this item.
Okay, as much as said, there is a pending motion here by Commissioner Pacheco and seconded by Rick Trump, so all those say aye, all those in the closest public hearing? She's aye. Oh, you have a comment, Teresa? Okay, it's been moved and seconded and then the motion is carried. So the we are now closing the public hearing. Now, we recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt adopt the findings as outlined, any any motion?
So moved.
I second.
Been moved a second there, that say aye in case the everything is all on the paperwork, say aye.
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 Been moved a second, motion is approved. Recommended the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project. Recommend that the city council approve general plan amendment GPA thus eleven thus one nine thus zero one four or three three one on change ZZ thus eleven thus nineteen thus oh one or three two and design review DR eleven nineteen zero one or three three three.
So moved.
I second.
Move a second. Moved and seconded by Gary. Okay, roll call please.
Uh, Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Proanio?
Hi.
Villanueva?
Hi.
Satori?
Yes. So, uh, thank you very much to the resource person. And that was the first, this, this will go to the city council. Is, is it going to go to the city council, Michael?
To go to city council December tenth.
Okay, because here, so Mr. Budanis. We are, we are here.
Fourteenth, December fourteen.
December fourteen?
Yes.
So December fourteen, we are supposed to be a recommendatory body and, but eventually it will be the city council that will approve it. Okay, going now to.
Thank you.
Item number two. UPR thus zero nine twenty thus zero one four six ninety-two, the so-called coastal development permit. This is a very controversial one. Sun Hill Property Company proposes to conduct a geotechnical subsurface investigation to characterize and evaluate geotechnical hazards at four point twenty-seven acre site located at twenty-one fifty-two Olympic Way. The exploratory work would consist of up to six vertical borings to determine foundation design and prepare a slope stability analysis, pipe test pits or infiltration testing, and one trench to identify features indicative of landslide formation. Approximately thirty-five cubic yards of soil will be temporarily excavated from the trenches and test pits and backfill upon completion of exploration. The exploratory borings and trends would take approximately two weeks to complete. Infiltration testing would take one to two weeks to complete. The result of the investigation will be used to prepare a comprehensive geotechnical study for a proposed retreat center project currently under review under the GPA thus zero nine thus nineteen thus zero one four two one eight. UPR thus zero nine one nine thus zero one four one nine seven. DR zero nine thus one nine thus zero one four one nine six. The project is in the Resource Protection Combining District, requiring the issuance of coastal development permit for the proposed grading and extraction of materials. A grading permit application is also concurrently under the review by Engineering Division. Now, this will be amplified and presented by staff Carmelisa Morales, Associate Planner. You are recognized, Ms. Carmelisa Morales.
Thank you, Commissioner Satori. Hello again, everyone. I will be presenting on this use permit, which will be located at twenty-one fifty-two Olympic Way and is for a geotechnical subsurface investigation. Okay, so in this slide, you can see where the proposed project is located. It is along Olympic Way, which is parallel to Skyline Boulevard. And the next intersection, the closest intersection is John Daly Boulevard. And some background information regarding this project. So the applicant Sand Hill Property Company actually submitted a development application for a proposed retreat center, and this was submitted in September twenty nineteen. Within the application, there were two geotechnical feasibility reports submitted and both recommended more detailed comprehensive studies that be performed to further characterize and evaluate geotechnical hazards at the project site. And after some review and discussion, especially with other outside agencies such as the California Coastal Commission and also California Sea Parks, et cetera, the city decided to require the detailed studies upfront. And we asked that the studies include a subsurface and geotechnical investigation as well as a stop, slow stability and bluff retreat analysis. So it is, I believe it's important to, to state that this is not a project, this is not a presentation or an approval for the retreat center. This is for an investigation that is required in order to move forward with the proposed retreat center. And so this shows an aerial view of the project site. It is adjacent to an existing commercial use, which are some horse stables currently operating. And then a vacant piece of private land to the south. And then on the west side is a, are the bluffs and the Pacific Ocean and then Skyline Boulevard and Olympic Way and some residential neighborhoods to the east. Here's some site photos. This is if you're facing the Pacific Ocean, Olympic Way, that's at the bottom photo. And then if you were at the southwest corner of the site facing north, and you'll see the commercial use that is currently existing adjacent to the property. And so this project is for a proposed geotechnical subsurface investigation, as I mentioned, to characterize and evaluate geotechnical hazards at the site. The investigation will be used to develop a comprehensive geotechnical study that would determine the suitability of the site and answer a lot of questions that the city and outside agencies have asked the applicant regarding the proposed retreat center. The coastal development permit is required due to the proposed grading and extraction of materials on the site, which is considered development in the city's local coastal program. And concurrently, there is a grading permit under review by the Engineering Division and is required for the proposed work. So the next couple of slides will go over the proposed investigation. So this work will be conducted by NGO, which is the applicant's geotechnical consultant. The investigation will include six vertical borings, five test pits and a trench. Approximately three hundred fifty cubic yards of cut is proposed. All of the material will be returned back to its original locations and only minimal vegetation is removal is, is proposed. Here's a survey of the site. The project site does, um, does include two, three parcels. And this is the site plan showing where the proposed work will be located. As you can see, the various shapes indicate which is the soil boring location where the test pits are and where the trench excavation will be located. And so, so for the soil borings, there will be two that will be used to gather data on the bedding planes, plane orientations and, and groundwater depth fluctuation for use in a slope stability analysis. And the other four borings will be used to characterize the subsurface conditions. And this will be used to design the foundation of the retreat center. As for the trench, one is proposed. Initially, there were two proposed, but after a revised site plan, NGO determined that only one is needed. It will be approximately five feet deep, five feet wide, and up to three hundred fifty feet long, extending approximately twenty feet from the top of the bluff. This investigation will be used to identify how cracking frequency changes near the bluff as well as identified tension cracks, which are indicative of landslide form, formation. And NGO has, does not anticipate that the shallow grading operations would pose a risk to the stability of the bluff. Lastly, there are five test pits proposed, or at least I think it's six. That will be approximately five feet wide, five feet long and five feet deep, and this will be used for infiltration testing. So this project does require a coastal development permit. Generally, typically, coastal development permits are for new structures additions to existing structures. But because the city's local coastal program defines development to include grading and extraction of materials, we, a coastal development was determined to be required. I'm sorry, coastal development permit was determined to be required. And I, I do also want to mention that the project is zoned C one RP, which indicates the project is located within the coastal zone, thus requiring the CDP. So upon review of the local coastal programs applicable to the project, staff determined that the project is in compliance, specifically with in regards to the environmental, environmental environmentally sensitive areas. There was a biological resources assessment that was prepared by WRA that was submitted for the application. They determined no special status plant species were observed on the site. And there were no sensitive natural communities or jurisdictional waters or wetlands identified within or directly adjacent to the site. And to avoid any possible impact to these biological resources, there were, there are conditions of approval imposed on the project to protect common nesting birds, which is common in Daly City, just to mitigate that risk as well as best manage, management practices when they do conduct the proposed investigation. So staff determined that the project is exempt from CEQA in accordance with Section fifteen three oh three Information Collection. The, there is data collection involved, which would not result in a serious or major disturbance to environmental resource. And this information should be used for a study, which would lead to a public agency action that has not yet been approved yet. And so this is a summary of the findings that are listed in the staff report. And in conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission forward the following recommendations to the city council, which is to adopt the findings as, as outlined in the staff report from the environmental assessment and approve the use permit subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. The applicant's team are all in attendance at tonight's meeting and are happy to answer any questions, any technical questions that the commissioners might have, but they do have a presentation that they'd like to briefly go over, and I'll switch over to their, their slides right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morales. Before I open up the public hearing, I would like to hear from my fellow commissioners if they have any feedback or any, any comment.
Not at the moment.
Or I could ask after the presentation.
Oh, you still have the presentation? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Nadine. I'm with NGO. We're the geotechnical firm proposing this investigation. So we just want to go over just a brief overview of the proposed work. And so the purpose is, like Carmelisa said, to further characterize and evaluate the geotechnical hazards at the site as requested by Daly City and the Coastal Commission. And also to, while we're out there, gain subsurface data needed for preliminary foundation design and percolation data in accordance with Daly City requirements. So the investigation is proposed to be conducted during business hours, Monday through Friday, approximately seven to five PM. Next slide. So soil borings, we have one to two hundred and fifty feet, which will take the longest amount of time. One to one hundred feet, four to between ten and fifty feet. And these are all permitted borings through City of Daly City. So there will all be backfilled with grout upon completion. And there's a picture of the drill rig that we're proposing to use on the right side of the slide. This is truck-mounted drill rig. It's got a maximum height of thirty-five feet. Noise is on the order of an idling semi-truck, so it, it won't sound a whole lot different than the noise from the highway nearby. And no significant vibrations are anticipated from drilling. And we've estimated about two weeks for completion. That's conservative estimate. Each boring, working on them, will have approximately a seventy by thirty-foot exclusion zone set up, which are shown on these red boxes on the, on the, on the map on the left. And that's for protection of the public while we're working out there, so that we can open up as much of the public space as possible and, and safely do our work. Next slide. So our exploratory trench is going to be roughly three hundred and fifty feet long. It'll be five feet wide and five feet deep. The purpose is, like Carmelisa said, to look for cracking bedding planes, potential slip surfaces. It'll be done by a backhoe, just a standard small backhoe. The trench will be dug over the course of a couple of days and then observed and logged by us for additional days. So maximum of about two weeks before it's backfilled. And no significant vibrations are anticipated during this. The sediments out here are pretty soft, so there won't be any significant ripping that'll be required. Next slide. And we do have five test pits proposed. And these are for infiltration testing. They'll be five feet by five feet by five feet dug by the same backhoe used in the trench, and it'll take about one to two weeks to complete this testing. And I think that concludes our presentation.
And actually, Chair Satori, if I may, good evening, Commissioner. My name is Steven. I'm with Samuel Property Company, the applicant for this project. In addition to our geotech consultant NGO tonight, we also have our biologist Greg Sproul from WRA, as well as our civil engineers from Sandis, who are more than happy to answer any other questions you have. And I would only briefly add to Nadine's presentation. When we started this project about two years ago, before, well before we submitted to the city, we did indeed commission two geotech reports and a bit of explanation on that. So we commissioned the first geotech report to try to understand if the cliffs were safe to build on. When everyone goes out there and looks at them, we see, you know, the cliffs are sloughing off. We know there's been issues in the past with the Olympic Club, now their, their back nine is right close to this area. We know there's been issues with Pacifica just in the south of the site. So we wanted to understand before we even engage with this property owner, was it safe to build on? Was it safe to have a land use that had people on it? And that we did get from NGO, and not that we didn't believe NGO, but we wanted to double check. So we actually commissioned the second report from Cotton Shires about six months later. And they came to nearly identical conclusions that the site is in fact safe to build on. It is terra firma. It's not part of the bluff that have already slid down the hill. However, as Ms. Morales correctly stated, before the studies could finalize and say definitively one hundred percent, yes, they are safe to build on, they wanted to be able to go on site and be able to look at the underground geology. They wanted to see where the water table is. They wanted to see some of the characteristics of the soil to understand before they can say one hundred percent. And based on these two reports we submitted to the city, and that's what Coastal Commission, Daly City, as well as Daly City's Environmental Consultant, Baby G Powers, all saw these conclusions and said, hey, before we move on too much further in the environmental process, we need to understand completely. We need to be a hundred percent. Can these sites be built on safely? So that's why we're in front of you tonight with the grading permits as part of environmental process. So with that said, we have to answer any questions or comments we have.
So you could add on, Ms. Morales. Anything else? Would you like to add on on that?
I have no, no other comments at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any, any comments on the commissioners?
Yes, I had a question. So are the borings and the test pits occurring at the same time? So it's a total of two weeks of investigation, or is it a total of four weeks?
Some of the activities may overlap. I, it, it may not be a clean two weeks. But we will be able, and we will make every effort to double up work to minimize the time on.
Okay, and as I was going through some of the public comments, then I think there was a concern with the, the horses and the business next door and how they're going to still operate while you're doing the testing. Has, have you reached out to them and worked with them to see how you could compromise a, a safe path for the horses while you do the investigation?
So we, we have initially, when we first were working the Coastal Commission, the large, the, the big issue is the long three hundred foot test pit, you know, the five by five pit that they need to look at the strata of the earth within there. And originally, we had that immediately adjacent to the stables. It's sort of the logical spot. It's where there's the hard, the, the, the trucks have been going in there. It's easier to get the equipment in there. But based on the ability for the horses to be able to access the coast, as well as the public, as well as the dog walkers, of which every day I've been out to that site, by the way, I've seen dog walkers walking down that trail. We moved the test pit as far south away from the stables as we could. That will minimize dust, dirt, noise. So when you look at one of the slides that we had, I think it was the third slide from Action Staff Report, well, you can see where as far south as we can get that test pit. And we've also minimized some of the fencing around the boring areas, so that way the horses sort of won't be, you know, intruding upon those. I wish I could sit here in front of you and tell you that we're going to open this up one day and it'll be closed the next and it's gone. But it's not. It's, it's a pretty detailed nature of work. It's a very expensive study. It's a critical study and it's going to take a little bit of time. So unfortunately, we need about two weeks. With that said, there's actually the adjacent property owners are actually on the call tonight if you have any specific questions for them.
Okay. I just want to follow up on Commissioner Velba's question there concerning the horses. Okay, will the noise of the drilling, will that stress the animals out?
Anybody can answer that?
Sorry, I could just speak from a little bit of experience. So we, we do this kind of investigation on, you know, almost any new property development. I'm in the Bay Area or all over California. We've done this investigative, this kind of investigation in cattle fields with horses nearby. So there's, there's usually interest. On the part of the animal, but we have not noticed a significant disturbance. So that's, that's our experience.
Okay, thank you.
Point out, there is substantial noise from the highway. So to some of the horses should be acclimated to disturbance.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anybody else would like to, Rick, Commissioner Rick, any, any comment?
No, Ray, I don't.
Okay, good. Teresa, I know you have some question. Teresa, go ahead. You're unmute. Please mute your, that, go ahead.
The only thing I was going to say is that when reviewing, I had comments with Carmen Lisa. Was my concerns with the environment and how it affects the community who uses that, that, that space. It doesn't, I was just in looking at the diagram, it doesn't take all area. But is there a way where it would make it continuous, meaning? This, the project, does it take all the way where the horses would go and people walk? Or are you taking that into consideration when making these plans whereas you're, you're including? The current use of the, of the area?
Anybody could, would like to answer that?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that may be a question for me to correct me if I'm wrong. Yes, again, you know, stepping back two years ago, when we were first looking at this site. It's abundantly clear, this is a very popular site, even before COVID has shut things down. It caused us, most of us to kind of get outdoors a little bit more, more frequently than we had before and go to our local open space. It's clear there's a very popular site. It's just, it's horses, it's professional dog walkers, it's casual dog walkers, it's hikers, it's everyone. So it's, we need to make an accommodation for that. That, that's, that's obvious. At this point in time, there's trails running sort of all over the site. Some are major trails, some are minor trails. But it's clear that the main trail leading from Olympic Way. To what today is probably the only sort of safe access point down to the closed state beach below. That's a paramount concern. That will stay open. There's no, there's no thought of closing that. That has to stay open. It's an immediate access for the horses to access the beach as well. So yes, we've heavily considered that, that when the plans ultimately come back to you. You will see that that will be what will probably have a public easement put on it. That's my guess. So.
I also have another question. Thank you. Could you explain to us your vision of this property, your vision of what you see the community and people using it? It says it's a retreat, I guess. What do you, what do you, how many people do you envision using this facility and now? Can you kind of give us an idea?
Well, I mean, it's, I would love to sit down and talk a little bit more detail about that when, when you get to that, that point in time. We're actually still working that through with staff coastal commission as well as state parks in terms of what this, what this project is. But right now, we're, we're still in the environmental review process. And we need to get a grading permit in order to complete the study. To be able to even move forward with the normal designer review process. So we've got a long way to go. We did submit some pretty detailed information. It's on file with the city right now. It actually explains sort of all about our project. I love, I can forward that to you. But that may be a little bit more than we have time for right now.
Pardon me, I'm so sorry. Just that, I think it's important that you give us a little outline. It doesn't have to be detailed. What you envisioned the property becoming due to the fact that we've received so many letters that are against this project. And any type of building. And so in my opinion is that if you can express to us. What you envision this property becoming. It, you might have a different response from the community. As it is sits right now, community is not excited about your project.
Sure. Well, I mean, first, I'm not sure if that's, that's necessarily true because we, there are certainly a lot of other aspects of the community that are excited about this. But I do, I do realize that there is a grouping of folks that, you know, would like to see this property sort of. Remain open space in perpetuity. But just very briefly, so what we have submitted for to the city. So we've submitted for a Christian interdenominational retreat center. It's a pretty small building. It's less than thirty thousand square feet. It's a two story building. And the concept behind it originally came from, we, so with Sand Hill Property Company, this is, I'm going to back up into the long answer here. We have a, our normal sort of property development branch and we also have a foundation. So our foundation, we work at a lot of churches, a lot of nonprofits. We help churches assertive add buildings on or meet various needs. Churches today are very different than they were, you know, twenty, thirty years ago. Don't have a lot of capital. Some churches are doing fine. Most churches have shrinking congregations. They have, they're losing space. And one of the big needs from some of the, a lot of the San Francisco churches and peninsula churches that we heard. Is they really don't have a lot of places to go to meet. They don't have nice spaces. Churches typically don't pay a lot of lease. So they're kind of the first to go in some of these sense. So. That's, that's sort of the original vision as it was conceived. Now, obviously this isn't just based on Christian churches. If there's a temple or a synagogue. Or any other group that wants to come and meet in the space, the idea is that it's nonprofit. It's, it's free. If they can pay, they can pay. That's sort of the Monday to Thursday use of this site. The Thursday, Friday, Saturday use of the site. Would be basically an open community, basically an ability for the community to come in and rent the space. So whether it's birthday parties. Or civic events or, you know. High tech product launch, whatever it may be. Weddings are probably a big one, frankly, given, you know, daily, this is just a beautiful, beautiful part of Daly City. Weddings probably would be a fairly popular venue out there. Hence our rooms that are below there meant sort of for wedding parties go to stay on site. So that's the idea. The community could come in and rent the space. Anyone could come in and access this space. It's open to the public. And from my side, from an operational side, that's good because what it means is there's some money coming in. So the project will ultimately break even. A project that just doesn't make any money or that, or this is a law. So that's the idea is that it's open at certain times for the public and at other times it's. Set aside for interdenominational use. Now, with that said, obviously we've looked at the grounds. The grounds need to be improved. The grounds are mostly filled with a lot of invasive ice plant mats. That, that, and they run deep into the ground. It's going to be a very expensive habitat restoration. And with that, we also want to take a look at the trail system. I've actually submitted a plan to you that has an access plan. Not sure if you had a chance to review that. But what it looks at is number one, the edge of the cliff. It's radically unsafe right now and there's no other way to say that. I actually went out there with my kids and my dog and it is incredibly unsafe. And there was an incident there a couple of years ago, as we know. That needs to be made to be safe. There needs to be some signage. There needs to be a nice fence that will delineate the edge of the cliff. And there should even be some lighting that lights up at least from a foot candle perspective where people can, can and cannot go. Even the public access points coming off of Olympic Way. It's not accessible, right? It's not on a stabilized surface, probably muddy tonight as we're even talking. That needs to be approved. There needs to be some light. There needs to be some signage. So even from a public perspective, we're seeing a lot of opportunities to clean the site up. Today, there's, there's, you know, folks that are going out there that probably shouldn't be out there. There's a lot of garbage on site as well. So yeah, our site is to enhance it. We love the fact that the stables are next door, by the way, because a lot of our groups that do come in would absolutely probably. Love to take advantage of having the stables and the horses next door. It's pretty exciting. So sorry, that's, that's the long answer to your, your question. I hope that's okay.
Any more question or any more statement coming from you, fellow commissioners?
No.
No.
I have not yet opened the public hearing. I would like to talk about this. You know, I know this place, Mar Vista Stable. Because about twenty five years ago, I know my daughter went, went there for some recreation. And. Most of the letters I got here, about five letters, they're concerned about the closure. The way I look at it. It will let me close. Besides. I remember. About eighteen years ago. During the time, I think of Terry, Terry Sedik and Rich. There was a proposal to build a hotel there. But the point is, the soil is to soak. At the same time, the wind is very, I would say, very high at any given time there, especially during rainy season. And that's why it was, it was through the hotel. And at the same time, because of the. The opposition of some people there. And I don't understand why these people are against because. Daly City is on vision, just like a Tatum and Michael have the vision to improve this. And most of the residents I was looking at, it is from San Francisco, not from Daly City, believe me. So. We are doing this to develop Daly City, not, not for the sake of the horses, believe me. And that is why if we try to make an assessment, analysis or any geotechnical study of this, it is for the benefit of the Daly City. We, you know, it's not for the horses or for some people living in, in San Francisco, just to enjoy it. I, we have enjoyed that Mars Vista Stable, but the point is let's give the Daly City a chance to develop itself. Especially from those residents of San Francisco, okay? Now I'm going to open the public hearing. Yes, sir. Those who would like to speak, you can speak now. There's Dave Mario, you are recognized. You're recognized, sir. You're muted, please. We said, Dave Myro. You're, you're muted, sir.
Okay, I'm unmuted now.
No, no, I can hear you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. So. I've been involved with the stables for the last forty two years. We purchased the property, a group of very, very young, purchased the property in nineteen, in nineteen seventy eight. And we were all horse people. At that point in time, the property, for those folks of you who have been around for a while, had a large riding ring academy with it. Which unfortunately burned down. When kids got into the hayloft. So we have a, a facility there that. We have been working with, with the Landry family. First Woody Landry, who we're very close to, and now Zach Landry. And I was just up at the property the other day talking with Zach. And I had the same concerns that Zach did concerning, for example, the trenching. Which after Steve. And, and, and his team has moved that back to the other side of the property. We don't have any problem with the access to the trail down to the bottom of the bluff. And Zach Landry agrees totally with me. In fact, I was on the phone with him today at about three o'clock again. And, and the trench was something that we needed to get moved back and Steve has moved it back and. We no longer have any, any problems with the access for the horses, which is our main concern. For the, the relatively very few number of borders that are at the stable right now. Of course, COVID has taken its, its toll. On, on the number of borders. And, and the various camps, et cetera, that, that Zach has been so successfully put it, put on. So. That's point one is that, is that standpoint of the property owners from the standpoint of my conversations with Zach Landry. There are no more concerns with the trenching or anything that the geotech is going to bring out. The other point that I really want to make clear is that for the first time that, that Steve and I met. Steve made the comment to me that they were very excited that the users of this facility would be very, very. Welcome to use the stables as a very unique source of entertainment for the people that would be using the facility. That, that Steve's group would be building. And we're very much for this. So.
Leave your, 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 I talked for about two or minutes.
Okay, well, I'll just end it right there. We have no problem with the work that they're going to do. The state, the, the leasing, who is Zach Landry, has no problem with the work that's going to be done. And we welcome the works that can be done from the standpoint of having people who will really appreciate the stable and the horses going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any more who would like to speak? About the project? Anybody else?
Um, through the chair, just we do have five comments on Open Gov, so I'm ready to read.
Okay. Would you like us to recognize them or would you like to talk or read a portion of their? Letter?
I'll, I'll go ahead and read all their comments if you're ready. You ready?
Sure, go ahead. You're recognized, Tatum.
Okay. Let me get to them. Okay, the first comment is from David Ingram. And they write, my name is David Ingram and I am a general contractor who has worked around these coastal cliffs since the late eighties. Prior to that, as a child, I ran around these cliffs. I've experienced many changes from the landslide that wiped out the Thornton Beach structures in the eighties. Which is adjacent to the proposed work to be done. To the most recent sandslide last year that claimed a life at Fort Funston. Ocean Shore Railway lost tracks and machinery in the early nineteen hundreds on these cliffs. Henry Dolder had to move eleven homes being built around the fit, around the fifties that were starting to slide down the cliff just south of Thornton Beach lookout. Apartments and homes on Esplanade in Pacifica either fell off the cliffs or had to be removed. Twenty one homes in early two thousands around the Palisades area were demolished before they slid into the ocean. This coastline is unstable to build structures on or in close proximity to. I realized the work to be performed is needed to get a better picture of what could be done for a project on the site. I have a few concerns on this exploratory testing. The trenching that is proposed goes across both the equestrian trail and the public dog walker access to the paths down to the bluffs and beach. Since COVID nineteen, the public using this has increased by one hundred and fifty percent. There are safety concerns for the public as well as health concerns for the horses in the adjacent corral. I would assume that the entire lot would be cordoned off to prevent anyone from wandering into the work zone and stepping into the pit slash trench. If the lot is to be cordoned off, where would the public dog walkers and equin access? And equin access the path to the bluff slash beach? The large machines there may not put undue stress on the horses of the corral and this needs to be considered as well. The heavy machines that will be doing the work will most certainly damage the naturally growing meadow, which is a habitat to many wildlife and native plants intermixed in the ice plant that pervades the entire area. My initial understanding was that the work would be done in one day. Now the estimate has turned into fifteen. It becomes three or four weeks. After that. After that, all the trenching pits will be covered back up. Are the plants going to be moved to the side before trenching digging and replaced in kind? If the small business known as Marvist Stables has no access to riding trails, it will have no major income being generated to support the need and maintenance of the horses. After the experience of COVID nineteen shutdown, I am certain. I am uncertain if Marvista would strive another loss of income. Heavy machines in close proximity to the cliffs will no doubt cause some shifting of the sandy hillside. There are regular landslides and shifting of the cliffs throughout the year. I believe large machines on this lot will increase land erosion and expedite. The natural occurring topographical deterioration of the land alongside the very. the natural occurring topographical deterioration of the land alongside the very active San Andreas Fault Line. I feel that the above information is important and may have been overlooked. We all would like what is best and safest for the area with the least amount of negative impact. That concludes that comment. The second comment.
I want to bother Tatum. Tatum?
Yes.
Just read the highlights, just just a few highlights that that concern them very well, okay?
Um, I mean, I know that for the council meetings, they're reading the full full comments. I guess I would ask the city attorney if I'm allowed to summarize the comments.
I, we can ask the the lawyer here.
Sorry. Um, yeah, Tatum, yeah, because we typically only do two minutes, I would limit the comments to how you feel best.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. This comment, I can just read, it's very short. This is from Benny Borton. This comment says, "I have been in this four-point-two-seven acre site, as well as the surrounding area leading to the beach. Every winter, it is clear how completely unstable this area is as one after another cliffside disappears." Uh, yeah, the the next one is fairly long. I'm just reading it for the first time. So this comment is Annie Ellicott, and she's here on behalf of the organizing committee of Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve. She is opposing the proposed coastal development permit for the geotechnical investigation. She is opposing this based on the CEQA review. They're questioning the level of sequel analysis that was done and that the categorical exemption was applied, that it's going to impact the business of Marvist Stable and have impacts on livestock housed in the corrals at that business. And asked if SPCA was even consulted to determine the impacts and if there will be any ground shaking. She further states that the land is unsuitable for development due to their steep slope, geotechnical hazard, bluff retreat, and erosion, the soil composition of the sandy clay, and land instability. She cites the Daly City's local coastal plan, requires new developments to minimize risks to life and property in areas in high geological hazard areas to assure the stability. She further states, "Geotechnical testing would create unsafe conditions for the public, and that the drilling of holes and trenches will further destabilize the bluff and create an unsafe condition." And potentially doing this during the winter rainy season with the presence of groundwater can further destabilize. She's stating that the project is inconsistent with the current zoning regulations. And then the testing process would block access by both the public and the city and Daly City Fire to Thornton State Beach. That the area is used by hikers, runners, fishermen, dog walkers, horseback riders, paragliders, parasailers. And there's been an increase by the the public over the past three decades. The testing would interrupt operations of and cause loss of revenue to Marvist Stables. And there's concern about the location of the drill holes and trenches that are proposed. It'll cause financial harm to the business from lost access to the trail for riding and riding lessons. And as a final note, she's had the pleasure of using the area with thousands of residents. And she hopes the planning commission has also spent time enjoying the views, wildlife, and scenic trails. It is a special place along the coast and and that she encourages outdoor enthusiasts to promote and work with GGNRA, Fort Funston Golden Gate National Parks Conservancy, and private community groups such as hers, the Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve. So there was that comment. We have two more. We have another one. I think I can read this one in less than two minutes. So I'll just read this one. I think it's maybe a little easier. This is from Lisa Dunmire. Dear Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the permit application to conduct geotechnical subservice investigations at twenty-one fifty-two Olympic Way. I urge the planning commission to not grant this permit due to public safety concerns. The supporting materials submitted by Sand Hill Properties include Attachment B, project plans, which identifies the locations for the soil boring, infiltration test pits, and trench excavation. These locations block numerous public paths used daily by hikers and equestrians to access the trailhead for the Bay Area Ridge Trail. The proposed trench is three hundred to three hundred and fifty feet long, five feet deep, five feet wide. This leaves twenty feet at the very edge of the bluff for hikers to walk north to the trailhead or encourages them to hike straight down the cliffs from the parking area. This is a major safety hazard. The trench blocks the trail used by Marvist Stables, conducting public rides with many new beginner riders. Loop travel by horses before descending the cliff trail provide the wranglers time to evaluate the riders, the horses, and the overall group prior to descending. This is a safety protocol that will no longer be able to function, given the numerous obstacles along the pathways. In addition to the trench, five test pits approximately five feet wide, five feet long, five feet deep are proposed for infiltration testing. Although these do not block pathways, they do propose a fall and tripping hazard. There is no clear plan showing how long it will take to install these hazards and what fall protection would be installed to alert the public. Soil borings are also proposed on and off pathways leading to the trailhead ranging in depth from ten to two hundred feet. Not only do these add hazards for the public, but they also further destabilize the bluff. Please note page twelve of Attachment C, showing the locations of active landslide areas. There are two slides not shown in the QTM area. These fell last winter. Erosion is content, content, constant. The soil boring will destabilize the area. Lastly, please note on page twenty of Attachment B, noting the location of the proposed site directly on top of the historic fault line. This area of land is not suitable for development. Please do not grant this permit. Respectfully, Lisa Dunmire, and she left her phone number and email address. And the final comment is a repeat of the first comment from David Ingram. I guess he submitted as a registered and an unregistered member of Open Gov. So this is just a repeat of the first comment I read to you. So that that completes the comments on Open Gov.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Any motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We move a second there that we close now the public hearing. All those say, all those who are able to close this, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendation. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
We move a second there that we adopt the findings as herein. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Recommend that the city council approve the environmental assessment. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
We move a second. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Get it. Recommend that the city council approve use permit UPR dash zero nine two zero dash zero one four six nine two. Hostile development permits subject to the findings and condition outlined herein. Motion?
All moved.
Second.
Let's move a second there. The roll call, please.
Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Proanio?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes. Okay, when is this going to the city council? Michael?
November fourteenth.
Okay, thank you very much. Just for your information, for those who wants to speak in the city council, they can do that. They can write the letter. Because we are recommending this to the city council. Thank you very much, Michael. And the third item of the night is the use permit UPR dash ten, dash twenty, dash one four seven four five, and design review DR one zero dash two zero, dash one four seven four six. Francis Adalza proposes to construct a new two-story residential duplex at one six seven nine Annie Street, where the existing home on the property will be demolished. This project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, under the CEQA Guidelines, section one five three zero three, dash B. New construction of small structures.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission.
Recognize Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the planning commission. This is a use permit and design review request to construct a two-unit building at sixteen seventy-nine Annie Street. The zoning requires a use permit prior to construction. Again, this is a two-story duplex building on a lot that's presently occupied by a single-family home. That home would be demolished and replaced by the duplex building. Building would be approximately twenty-five hundred fifty square feet. The lower unit, Unit A, would occupy the part of the first floor. The other part would be occupied by the garage that would serve both units. Downstairs unit would be approximately nine hundred square feet. And then the upstairs unit, Unit B, would occupy the entire second floor. And that would be a bigger unit at sixteen hundred and forty-nine square feet of habitable area. The lower unit would contain two bedrooms, two bathrooms, living room, and a kitchen. This is a map showing the location on Annie Street, the project site. It's just north of the intersection of Annie and Pierce. Here's a site photo of the home that would be demolished. The planning commission may care to note a couple of things in this proposal, and that's the adjacent, it's basically a courtyard for Allied Waste. Staff has required, and the applicants actually proposed some walls, and staffs require some additional, actually, construction of walls instead of the regular wooden fencing on the backyard of the duplex just due to the durability that's going to be needed by the equipment that gets the wall over time, as well as a noise attenuation effort for the residents who enjoy the backyard, the duplex residents who would enjoy the backyard. Also notable here is that we have a guy wire that is coming off of a PG&E pole that would occupy part of the or would currently rests in where the driveway to the duplex is proposed, and the applicant's, of course, going to be required to work with PG&E to relocate or redesign that guy wire some way so that it obviously doesn't block the driveway. So it's a couple of things on this existing site photo to note. Here is the site plan. And it shows the location of the duplex situated on the property. Of course, a much bigger, larger structure than presently exists. Here's the driveway, two-car driveway. Take a look at the site, the floor plans, rather. And these these are the floor plans. There's two, as required by the zoning ordinance, there's a two-car garage. The garage has a dimension of twenty feet wide, and it's a wider garage than we normally require so that the occupants of the duplex, who may not know each other, just need more space inside the garage, and so that's the reason for the wider garage associated with the duplex. And then there's a two-car driveway, so four total parking spaces, two parking spaces per unit. And as I was pointing out, the downstairs of the duplex building is partially occupied by Unit A, and then Unit B above occupies the entire second floor. So these are the floor plans. The front and rear elevations, the project architecture is contemporary, modernist sort of design, very clean lines. Use of material and color to try and break up the building massing. Again, it's only a two-story building, much like the adjacent homes that exist to the north, which is a good thing. It fits well into the mass of the of the buildings that exist in the neighborhood today. These are the side elevations. The top is the side that would face the Allied Waste Corporation yard, so there's no windows or anything on that side. And then the image on the bottom is the left elevation that would face the existing home to the to the north of the product of the of the duplex site. These are some perspective drawings the project architect has supplied to the planning division. Again, good use of materials and color and varying architectural just design elements to try and break up the building mass and provide actually pretty attractive building. Staff has actually does have no comments on the project architecture in terms of conditions of approval. This is a pretty good-looking proposal, so we don't really have any changes to it. Project's exempt from CEQA, and we're recommending the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the duplex. If there's any questions, the project architect is present. And staff is also able to answer any questions the planning commission members may have.
Thank you very much, Michael. And before I open up the public hearing, I would like to ask first my fellow commissioners if you have any question or any statement to say, or any any concern? Any? And Teresa, are you okay?
I have no, no questions.
Okay, looks like beautiful to me. So I am not opening this to the public hearing. Any concern? Public hearing is not open. Anybody wants to talk?
Um, sorry, on Open Gov, I just want to say that there are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much for your information, Tatum. You now close the public hearing, and as much as there is nobody wants to to talk on this public hearing. Any motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We move a second there that we close this public hearing. Those who are able to close, they say aye.
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 Get it. Recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council the following recommendations. Adopt the findings as outlined herein. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
We move a second there that we adopt the findings as outlined. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Get it. Recommend that the city council approve the environmental assessment. Motion? Motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion? It's move, I can did that we adopt, we recommend this to the city council. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Get it. Recommend that the city council approve the use permit UPR ten dash twenty, one four, one four seven four five, and design review DR ten dash twenty, dash one four seven four six, subject to the condition of approval identified herein.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved a second there that we approve this. Roll call, please.
Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Proanio?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes. So it's, when is this going to the city council, Mr. Michael?
Number fourteen.
Okay, thank you very much for your information. Are there any statement or any communication that you would like to state, my fellow commissioners?
No.
Any acquisition, vacation, or anything, any statement? Nothing, so well, I would like to close this bit, but before I close this, I would like to say thank you very much, and at the same time, happy Thanksgiving to all of you, to your family, and to the staff, a job well done to everybody. So let's keep this up for development and growth of the Daily City.
Definitely.
Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Be safe.
Thank you.
Any motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved a second there that we adjourn this meeting until the next night. Thank you very much, and have a good night to you.
Thank you. Everyone, thank you, commissioners.
Bye-bye.